Today.
Alright.
Did you ever send me that section three?
Email?
Yeah.
I have it right here, if you want it.
Well, I wanted to do it. Let's just table it and then make sure the process was correct. Because, did we advertise that we were extending the bid process?
Yes.
And there wasn't anybody else bid on it?
There was two bids, both underneath.
Right, but that was the original bids. And then reach out to them. I had a guy stop me the other day and wonder why he didn't have a chance to bid. And I told him to contact Jen or you, if you want to present a higher bid, so.
Section four, um, okay, we'll talk about it.
Okay.
Frank. Our gracious God, we are thankful. We are so blessed by you today to be in this place that we can be here today without being molested. Father, we're thankful for each one that is here today that has chosen and has concerns and things that they need to talk about. We just pray that things will go in a way that will be according to your will. We're thankful for these people who wish to spend their time, energies, in making our community better. And we're just thankful for all the blessings that you bestow upon us. Help us to use this day wisely. We pray for those who are in distress today. We ask your blessing and comfort upon those. And we pray that the conflicts around the world will one day realize that war is not the means by peace. And we pray that people will live together in peace and harmony. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
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 Thanks, Pat. Appreciate it. Just got a quick update for the courthouse renovation. Last week, Ron, myself and Nathan, Jen, all walked over to look at the courthouse. Demolition's about done on the inside of it, and there's not much more to go. I think the asbestos removal was done. There was a few concerns about some, a little bit of concrete work over there from the original building. And other than that, it's moving along pretty, pretty good, so. Got anything else on that, Ron?
No, pretty well covered.
Yep, so. There was a meeting over there, so, I mean, that was actually a public meeting over there with the commissioner. Not a public meeting, what, administrative meeting with the?
We actually call it a on-site inspection.
Inspection.
It's a.
Yeah.
I would say that the offices around the outside away from the atrium have been completely gutted.
Yeah.
And they started framing up the walls, but it is a complete remodel.
Yeah, 100%.
All that, all that they really started with was the middle section and the shell of the building.
Right.
So it'll be all new construction.
Yeah, everything on the public interior space of the atrium and everything is just as, as it always has been, so. Good. Alright, we got the meeting minutes from March 26th. Ron, have you had a chance to look those over?
I looked them over, saw no changes.
They have no changes. They have everything that get to me to. If not, look for a motion to approve the minutes from the 26th meeting.
Don't move.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold. I'll second that. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Alright, Chris, you're up. Morning, sir.
Morning. I guess we're gonna start with the old salt building?
Yeah, I think, I didn't realize we have, we did have a public meeting there, hearing today for the salt building. But we do not have all three commissioners here, but go ahead, Ron.
Sure. So we've got, this is the time and place we've advertised for a public hearing relative to the sale of this particular building. Would open it for any public input?
Anybody here? I don't think anybody's here for the salt building.
If not, we'll close the public hearing.
Yeah.
That section three that we were talking about requires that we have a public hearing for this type of thing. I know there were questions about the process, so if you want.
Yeah, I, I mean, we, we put it out to bid. We had a minimum price. We did not receive the minimum price. And I've looked those sections again. I'm not an attorney, but I don't see anywhere where we have the ability to lower the price. And it's like, I always thought it was a commissioner decision, the commissioner's being the executive, but you can review it and get back to us. The goal is to sell it and get the most out of it.
I'm ready to move forward, but I prefer all three commissioners to be here at the time of the sale, so.
So I would make a motion to table that till next meeting.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold. Table it. I'll second that. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Alright, Chris. I guess we get the interlocal agreement with the landfill too.
Yeah, I guess Grant had drew up the interlocal agreement with us and the landfill, which is the solid waste district. Trade a truck for some rock. I guess I need to send that agreement to Bob Oakes of the landfill before we proceed any harder with that. Make sure he's okay with it and the language in it.
Okay.
So I guess we need to table it.
That one also. So you got any more comments on that, Ron?
No, it should be pretty well cut and dried, but need to go through the process.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure he's gonna be fine with it, but we need to let him see it before we sign it and everything.
Sounds good. So I look for a motion to table the interlocal agreement with the landfill.
Don't move.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Just project updates, Chris.
On a couple of project updates. I'm not gonna throw a lot into project updates, but the salt building, our, our salt building at the shop there, I think we are waiting on the doors and a couple fans to be put up. And then that, that'll be complete. So our, our crews are doing a little electrical work in it.
Are you guys still waiting on the overhead doors too, right?
Yeah, the overhead doors. We got the interior doors, the man doors in. The overhead doors, the tracks and everything, they had sent off. It was DC metal. They sent it off to be powder coated.
Okay.
We've been powder coating, galvanizing all the.
Everything to keep.
Everything to keep the salt from corroding it, so it's looking like we'll be using that this winter.
Yeah.
Get a, finally get a salt building and have two of the warmest winters in the past nine to 14 years, but.
Catch up with this one, is that?
Yeah. And it's gonna be used for a lot more in salt.
Yeah, Chris, once that's functional, what do you think that'll do to your efficiencies?
Hey, well, to make this quicker, I'd, we'd figure it out just to take a truck from the county into town and get it loaded. And to get it back out even close to their route, we lose a little over an hour per load. So if one truck typically on a, on a snow event loads three times, that's three hours that we're doing nothing. So that.
Per truck.
Per truck. And we send 10 trucks out. So when you start adding that up, it, you know, three hours a day per one truck and times 10.
Yeah.
We're losing a lot of time just going to get our salt. Not putting it down on the roads where it needs to be. I guess another project update, it had been in the paper, and I know, I think commissioners had talked about it to the paper. I don't know which one, but we applied for a federal grant for the roundabout and the US Business 50 upgrade in a bridge over Colbert Beach. We actually got the, the roundabout, because it was, it was one grant, but it was two different sections. One of it was a safety grant, the other one was just a rehabilitation grant. We did get the safety grant from the state, from the federal government administered through NDOT for the roundabout. But we did not get the roadway rehab.
Right.
Our crews have been out there doing a little crack sealing on, on US 50. We're still proceeding with it, but we're gonna have to do it in a different, different manner. So the roundabout, you know, we got, I think it was $4,378,000 towards that. They're committed to 90% of building the roundabout, and the county would only be committed to 10%. There's a chance that they'll possibly fund the entire roundabout, being it a safety, safety concern. So the most that we'll pay on that is a little under $500,000. The roadway, well, I'll skip. The bridge, so there's a bridge on that roadway that we didn't get. And we've been looking for other ways of funding that and staying with, under what the, what the commissioners had agreed upon. But the, the grants may change on what is, what grant. I, I don't know how to put it.
Able to be used, aren't you?
Yeah, what, what's able to be used. We've worked out a deal with NDOT for the bridge. They're willing to pay 80% of the bridge, and the county paid 20% of the bridge. So the bridge, the, I got it here. The, the bridge rehab was like $1.2 million. And so the county's matching portion at 20% would be $266,000. So then that leaves the roadway. So the roadway ought to, actually, I don't need to apply for another grant for the bridge. I got the grant for the roundabout. The grant for the roadway rehab will be something I do need to apply for going forward. Maybe the CCMG.
Grant, yeah.
They raised the CCMG, the Community Crossings Matching Grant Funds, from a million dollars a year to a million five. So we may go after that and put that towards the road. Or we may go after another federal grant for the road, but there's some things we'd have to do different to, to make it qualified.
If we do the CCMG grant, it could be sooner than later, right?
Yeah, so it could be.
The roundabout and the bridge rehab will be later.
So the, the roundabout would be in the year like 2029. The bridge would be, right now, they're projecting 2025. So that's, that's, and the bridge is not a grant, it's just a.
Right.
Some kind of deal we've worked out.
For the rehab that bridge, yeah.
Yeah, so that would be 2025. And then if we do a CCMG grant, it would be 2025.
Yeah.
To do the roadway. And with, I think the roadway was about 300, or $3 million for the roadway. And 300 E, or 300 West. For some reason, I'm a little nervous today. Feel like I've not been up here for a while. But our, our portion of that, so if we do get a grant for that, then the most we would pay would be 580. So all the money that we've decided that we were gonna commit to this project as an entirety, separating it out like this will actually minimize. We won't be paying, we, we planned on, we projected on paying $1.5 million towards this project. So we'll be close to it, but, but we'll be under it. And then that will still leave us the, the million dollars that we received for the relinquishment to begin with.
Yeah.
I don't know if that made any sense.
What was the total amount we got for relinquishment?
Uh, two and a half million dollars.
So you're talking about spending a million and a half of that to get.
Upgrade that.
Top notch.
Yeah.
Yeah, upgrade that corridor. Like I said, we're doing it a little bit different phases, so.
Yeah, though it sounds good.
Yeah, I'm just glad I'm not the one having to type this up. Okay, so then the other part I need to talk about during that is the, the ducky sign, how we went to ducky sign.
Right.
And every year I need to, to get a legal signer for the county. And we had, we make it in a public meeting to make it the county highway supervisor.
Yeah.
If we make that through a motion and everything, then that is surpassed. I wouldn't be signing anything that you guys didn't already agree to publicly and in the meeting. And you guys would sign the original contract, but then when the process starts, with everything that they send that we gotta sign and okay, and sign and okay, and send us, route it through the three commissioners, they would be able to route that to me, and then I would sign it and it would proceed.
Yeah, I don't have any issue with that at all. It's what we've done in the past. Anything?
No, not at all.
Yeah, I'd look for a motion to have Chris Winkler sign all the future NDOT LPA vouchers, or not the LPA vouchers, but just grants and then everything to do with the grant, right?
Yeah, CCMG and the grant, like, again, it's nothing that you guys aren't gonna first sign. I'm just gonna sign it as it proceeds through the process.
Look for a motion to give this, have us attend to that approval.
Don't move.
Got a motion by Ron, Ron Arnold. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Last thing we talked about, this is kind of projects on our dust control. We kinda need to finalize that. You know, we're trying to get out of dust control, but we're also trying to get paid what we're putting into it and not, not giving it away.
Trying to get a break even.
Yeah, so just for some prices, I'll just use the AEPL and the chip seal process that we do. Last year, we were charging $2.33 a foot for the AEPL, which is the oil. And all we basically did is charge the, the residents for the oil. I think there is a little bit of sand, blotting sand that goes on top of it. But if we actually put our material, our labor and our equipment and our rock that we put underneath it before we put the oil in there, we would have to charge $5.78 a foot for it. Nobody that I talked to disagrees that the, that they should pay for the, the time that we spent specifically doing that for somebody. The labor, you know?
Right.
The equipment, the, the oil and the rock. But we do have a little bit of disagreement on the rock that goes underneath. Because if you put rock under there this year, you may not have to put rock under it next year. And they're already paying for the rock, so. If we took the rock off, that we, the base rock that we put underneath these spots to prep them to begin with, that, that would bring that price from 578 to 465. The chip seal, last year we charged 525, which was just for the chip seal rock and oil. If we charged our labor and time and the base rock, it'd be 1254. If we take the base rock underneath it, it'd be 846. But I think we talked about bridging the gap if this goes to.
Yeah, the hassle, you're, I guess my, my point of view, we're not rocking the whole road. We're only rocking that 200, 100, 200-foot strip of road, so.
Right.
It's above and beyond what we normally would do to the road, so I think you're gonna want the chip and seal and rock, and it needs rock. You're gonna have to pay for the rock. If it doesn't need rock, then we'll just go back to a different price.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, I mean, really, they talk about, I'm just gonna say it without getting technical about gas tax and stuff. We'll just say tax dollars. So they say, well, their, my tax dollars is paying for that rock in front of my house. Well, my tax dollars and your tax dollars are paying for that rock in front of their house also that.
That's why I said, if you're doing the entire road, then I would say, no, the county picks it up. But since we're spotting little spots, 100 or 200-foot strips down, down the county road, nothing else on that road gets maintained to that standard. Then yeah, I think that should be part of the dust control.
We, we, you know, we wanna get this advertised so we can start taking applications, so. We figured it out with what it, what it costs the county to actually do it with the base rock. Like you, so it'd be 578 and 1254 and the oil and the sand and the time and the equipment that we gotta specifically spend to do that.
Yeah.
If you guys are in agreement within prices, then.
Yeah, we, we talked about it. Anything that is normal maintenance on that road, we will take care of. Anything additional should be charged for.
Above and beyond, yeah. I feel the same way. I'm fine with those prices.
Which you're, you're gonna have to make some calls, and it's not always easy, but at the end of the day, it'll be your call.
Yeah.
Right.
But I'm fine with the 578 price and then whatever it is for the double chip and seal.
So to charge for dust control spots, what the county actually has in it.
Exactly.
Yeah. And I would agree with that, if anybody cares.
Did you say that in the future, though, you, you're not gonna be doing that, say like in a couple of years or something?
We're hoping in 2025. We're hoping this will be the last year.
Have a contractor doing it for us, yeah. So, I guess I'll look for a motion to, for dust control to, to, it says it was 578 for this year for a linear foot.
Yeah.
$5.78 a linear foot for the, for the, kind of highway department for dust control. And then it was 12 watt for.
Uh, 1254.
1254 for a double chip and seal.
Yeah.
Dust control, so. Look for a motion.
Don't move.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Chris.
I know that's not the best thing to have to vote on, but it, it's.
It's to the point that it's, it's affecting the rest of our services we're trying to do for the county.
Yeah.
And we're just, we're talking about 150.
150 people.
Residents versus, you know, the other 30,000 that's.
Takes us about two months for the whole process.
Yeah, so.
It's the fairest thing to do for the taxpayer.
I think that's all I've got.
I appreciate Chris.
Oh, wait, I do got one more thing, sorry. I was talking to the sheriff and the deputy over there. The 100 North, County Road 100 North, between the Washington Corporation line and, and 200 East.
Right.
They're gonna start conducting a speed study on that. We did a speed study from County Road 350 East, which is on the east side of the bypass to the Barrie School. There's a lot of traffic on there, and there's some mixed traffic with, with buggies and, and young drivers.
Yeah, and we had a lot of sight, distance issues right now too with that road, so. Yeah, I would like to start there at the.
200.
Yeah, the 200 back up to the city of Washington there, which is about where Grant lives at.
Yeah, we go right in front of Grant's house. There's a lot of curves in there, there's a lot of driveways and hills and. That's the main corridor back and forth to.
Yeah, we're definitely gonna have to get that, that speed limit slowed down if we can. I'm gonna, I'll do a speed study. Then definitely stripe that road, it's gonna help.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll probably put the, the striping in there, which I guess next, what is it, next meeting, we'll open bids for a striping machine.
Yeah, get that taken care of. Alright, sounds good.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Chris. Alright, I'm gonna change the agenda a little bit and move Kelly's sugar up. She's got a meeting this morning. I think I'm probably running her late.
Yeah, what would that be?
It's important.
Team.
Thank you for entertaining me earlier. Good morning, commissioners. Having your packet, a request for an application of a immunization grant. Because of our low immunization rates here in Davis County, we are applicable for several state grants. This particular one is 100% reimbursable. There is no match required. We do have to work on our immunization rates, but because of our nurses being so busy tied to other services, especially around our new clinics, which if you aren't aware of, I'd be glad to show you and go over. We would like to bring one of our PRNs into a dedicated immunization nurse. We need a new freezer, and our electronic medical records is about 12,000 a year, so this grant would cover all of that.
Okay. That grant's $87,208.50, right?
Correct, for all three of those things.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have any issue with it at all.
No issue.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Just for clarification, do we know if this is a state or federal grant?
It's a state immunization grant. I will clarify for you.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if it's identified in the package here. I'll let you know.
I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the Health Department's grant of $87,208.50.
Don't move.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Jen.
Thanks, Kelly. Hey, Jen. You want me to sign this or let Nathan sign this? It says for the.
You can.
Okay. Alright, with the DCH ambulance service contract. I don't know if I got a copy of that here. Do you have a copy of that, the, the old one, or the new one, or what do we got for the DCH?
The license.
We got an email. I did get an email on it, but.
We don't have it physically.
I know there are.
But there's a auto renewal clause in there. Just emailed out to the group. What I told Nathan too, because he, he mentioned an increase, I told him if, if that's gonna come from somewhere, it needs to come from the hospital and what they're wanting.
Yeah, I know the, I wasn't comfortable with even the first contract. Now they're asking for an increase. So if there's not three commissioners here, I'm not gonna vote for it, so there'd be a dead issue. I, I would prefer to table it for now until Nathan gets here and we get more information from the hospital, what they wanna do with that contract. But as of right now, I don't wanna, if it's the same amount, I will go ahead and move forward with it, but I, I know they're asking for an increase.
There's an auto renewal, so it has, it has renewed. But if they're asking for an increase, that, that would need to come from them, and then this board would have to decide.
Sidearm, so.
What they do.
And that contract was put in place, it was thought that it would decrease every year.
It's supposed to decrease back to zero, yeah.
Maybe NDOT making some money off of it, which isn't the case, but, and I've sat on the hospital board and have discussions. What I've always asked them, and I'd like this included in the request made to them for what they're wanting, is what's the downstream revenue by them providing the ambulance service? Because they were losing some business because the other ambulance services were not taken in Davis County.
Right.
And they had assured me they'd get me that, but I've yet to see anything, so.
I know, is it?
Till we make a decision. At the end of the day, the county's responsible for ambulance service, and they're doing us a favor by doing it. But we need to know more of the detail.
That we had more than one contract, and we paid a higher price for that contract at the time, being reassured that it would decrease over time, and it has not. Now it's an increase. I would not be in favor of it today, but I'd need, would need something from the hospital to understand what's going on, so, okay.
I'll make a motion to table it.
Okay, I got a motion for Ron Arnold to table it. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, Superior Court wages status. Anybody here?
On that, I spoke with Jen a little bit, and the discussion with the judge, he was gonna check with his state resources about what he was thinking, because we don't wanna blaze new ground.
Right.
As it relates to this, so I've not heard back from him, but he was going to check with the, there's an office of. For, maybe, to engage with and then get back with us.
No, no more information on that. I'll look for a motion.
Anything else on that, Jen?
Somebody, yeah. If not, I'll look for a motion to table that also. I guess we're on table everything today.
So moved.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright. Vehicle purchase request, Crystal Osby. How you doing this morning?
Good morning. I have included in your packet a couple bids for a new field vehicle. The current vehicle we have is an '03. It's on its last leg. They've, they've used the life out of it, so I am asking that you approve a purchase of a new vehicle.
Okay. So these are, every one of these are used vehicles too, looks like.
Yes, they're used vehicles.
So we emailed about this, with a procurement policy. And so I know you were gonna check to see if you get a couple of quotes from a couple of places.
I did. Washington Chrysler and Ford here in town.
Perfect.
And I do believe she also put on there with the trade-in, so she also needs permission for trade.
Oh, yes. So I need, I need permission to trade in that vehicle.
Yeah, so it's got, it shows every one of these $2,500 value for that vehicle, yeah.
Correct.
And the money is in your budget?
It is. It's in reassessment budget.
How much do you have in there? Do you have it broken out just for vehicle purchases?
We have a, we have $20,000 in the fund for this year. And then I need to move $20,500 from another fund into the vehicle fund to pay for it, but it's there.
But it's all within her budget. She's doing, she'll be going before council tomorrow for an, an intertransfer within her budget that she already has approved.
Which one are you recommending?
I would like to recommend the Jeep from Washington Chrysler. It has the least amount of miles with the most warranty left.
17,000 miles.
Uh huh.
22, 2022.
And I don't know if you guys have vehicle shop lately, but.
I know, that's, go ahead.
Low miles, finding a, a used vehicle with low miles is difficult. I, I got kinda lucky on this one. And they have it on their lot. It's ready to go.
It's, it's a little bit different than what we usually do, because it's usually new. But for the miles, like you said, and the warranty, that justifies the little bit higher amount. And then you go backwards two years on the other one.
Correct.
Any discussion on that, Ron?
Oh, no, I'm, I, it's out of her budget, and I would leave it at her discretion.
Yeah, it's like I said, it makes it a little more complicated when it's used, trying to figure out the exact low cost, lowest cost for a vehicle. But with the miles and then the year, then this, because the bottom one obviously is gonna be a cheaper vehicle just because it's two years, two years older, probably no warranty on it, probably left is or.
Um, on the Ford?
2020.
Uh, no, he didn't, he didn't specify that there was any warranty left. Like I said, maybe in my emails, is that I feel like we've used the Tahoe, the, the current vehicle they've used, we've had it since '03.
It was a used vehicle from the sheriff's department, correct?
It was used then, yeah.
Yeah.
And we've had it for years and years.